Okay, what you should all have, the order of things I think we'll do tonight, we'll do this Sun Common Shiraz EAF secret issue first. We will then do Ruby's because I think we're going to have some people from Ruby's here to answer some questions. We'll then do the Affordable Housing Amendment. I think being a Blue was there. Because I don't think anyone will be here representing the town board of that particular issue. So that's the order we're doing it in. You should all have a copy of Part One filled out by the applicant for Hudson-Soul or Sun Common Shiraz.
Michael?
Yes. Oh, and Karen's going to hurt herself and but she's also going to recuse herself. Actually, we won't be sitting up with this one. You also should have Part Two, which we fill out, and then Part Three, which we fill out double one form EAF. Okay? So I guess we're calling to order this workshop for the Town of Ryndick planning board. We have three issues that we'll deal with today. The workshop is set up to go over the EAF with the Sun Common Shiraz issue and come to a consensus on the determination of significance, which we will then ask our consultants Jim and John to put together a resolution for us to consider at our next meeting, next full meeting, which will be February 4. So, the rule of environmental assessment form, Part One, this is the latest revised version. The version you have should say December 1, 2018, on the last page. That's the most recent one. So, what we're going to do is we're going to go over Part Two, which we've had, which we fill out, and then Part Three. So, we're all set to go? And I hope everyone can hear me, and I hope there's not any feedback. All right. Part One, impact on land. Proposed action may involve construction on a physical alteration of the land surface of proposed site. And as we go over this, we refer back to Part One, we have some questions. And you'd see any in these lists here of impacts. Proposed action may involve construction on land or depth of water taking less than three feet. Proposed action, as I understand it, impact on the land.
So, in terms of one, what's his facts?
Is yes.
Right?
Up there. And then going through the detailed parts.
Michael, I can't hear you.
Okay. How's, is this better?
That's much better.
Okay, I'll try to speak right into this bit. I thought I was feeding back a little bit. Okay. The first question is, proposed action may involve construction on land or depth of water tables less than three feet. My understanding is the water table is not at less than three feet?
Is less than, is less than, or is not?
Is not. Is not. The water is down deeper.
Last page.
Last page?
Where do we get the report on the water table? Where is that information?
It's on page three. I mean, page 11 of 13 on your, please. Average depth of water table on site, 20-plus feet, so those would be no.
It says average depth, what was the, what was the range of those?
I don't know. The average depth, they say it's 20 feet.
So if we got one that was at 75 feet and one at two feet, that would...
Potentially, well, the likelihood of that's... The likelihood of that is probably not very great.
Okay.
Proposed action may involve construction on slopes of 15 feet or greater?
Or an F.
F. Zero to 10 percent, so the answer, that would be no. Proposed action may involve construction on land or bedrock exposed or generated five feet of existing ground surface.
That's B.
The answer's no.
Where are we getting this information from?
Getting it from page 11.
We're getting it from page 11.
Or on page 11.
On page 11. Proposed action may involve excavation removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural materials. Well, that's no. Proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or multiple phases. Could be no. Proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including treatment by herbicides. I think it would be a small impact, given that their proposal is to cut everything to the ground, leave the roots in place, and not do any grubbing. And there is an erosion control plan as well. So the answer would, that would be no. Proposed action is or may be located with coastal erosion hazard area. The answer to that is no.
No other impacts?
And anyone think of any other impacts on the land?
Well, what's Ray's letter, the drainage, is that part of this sort of thing?
That would be part of this under erosion. Ray would like to see, and this is something I think we can certainly make a condition of any approval, is a more detailed, we supply this to the applicant. I don't know if they received Ray's letter, it just came in this afternoon. What Ray was saying is, "In addition to the overall site disturbance, the plans may have created for you to identify total soil disturbances associated with the project, assuming that any soil may be exposed during the course of construction. Notes shall be added to the plans clearly specifying that all trees that are to be moved are cut and the stumps shall remain. Also, that no grubbing will take place as part of the site preparation." And up above, I believe, all right. "Under the drainage support, the pre- and post-development hydrologic analysis shows an increase in peak flows and runoff volumes at design points 1, 1C, 2, 10, and 100-year storm events as analyzed. The increase ranges from 5 percent to 37 percent of the pre-development rates and volumes. It is recommended that mitigation be provided to reduce the post-development peak flow rates and runoff volumes to pre-development conditions." And I spoke to Ray about that, and he would like to see that from the applicant. And that's something you can make a condition of any approval. When we get to that point, we would have to have sign up on that.
Does he have any, did he give any indication of what sort of remediation would be appropriate?
No, he didn't.
Okay. And what sort of remediation do you expect would be appropriate?
I'm not an engineer, so...
All right.
I think that the engineer for the applicant would supply that, and then our engineer would tell whether or not he feels that's appropriate. I did, Ray did call me, and I did speak to him today, and then he sent this out as well. Rest in peace. Okay.
So, Michael?
Yes?
What are we going to write in other impacts?
I don't know that there are other impacts on the land.
What was the discussion, and you said, no?
Well, that's in terms of drainage, and I think if someone can...
Was there an impact on the land?
I was thinking that may be one thing up above. But we can certainly put that down. Requires a further drainage plan per Ray's, it's today's date, January...
21st.
22nd.
22nd.
22nd, uh, memo to the plan. Okay. And if it's done correctly, then there would be no or small impact. And it's not going to raise satisfaction. Then we would not move forward. Hey, John?
Hello. Sorry I'm late. You didn't say anything there, you never...
Not yet, anyway. Okay. Two, impact on geological features. Proposed action may result in modification or destruction of or the privates access to any, any unique or unusual landforms on the site, such as cliffs, dunes, mineral processes, caves. I believe the answer to that is no, or there are any unique geological features on that property. Anyone, you all saw it, you all watched it, anyone see any unique?
I agree. It said that trash that's there isn't geological.
Uh, no, that's more of a human addition.
Or, remove.
Okay. Impact on surface water. Proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, streams, rivers, ponds, lakes. Okay, let's see. Oh, impact on the water. Okay, sources that are... Surface water features.
The total water level?
Under 11. Uh, under H. Does any portion of the project contain wetlands or other water bodies in the extreme river splits or ponds? The answer's no. Do any wetlands or other water bodies adjoining projects that...? Yes. If yes, to either one or two, continue. Are there any wetlands or water bodies that are joining projects like Ray, like any federal or local agency? Yes, I believe they're federal wetlands. Uh, yes. Federal wetlands on east end of property, about 0.2 tenths of an acre. Are there any other water bodies listed in the most recent New York State Water Quality and Air Border Bodies? The answer would be no. Is the project in a designated floodwater? No. Is it project site in a 100-year floodplain? No. Is it in 500-year floodplain? No. Is the project site located over or immediately adjoining a primary principal soil object? The answer to that is no. Okay, I would think that the impact, we can go down this, this list. Proposed action may create new body of water? The answer's no. Proposed action may result in increase or decrease of more 10 percent or more than a 10-acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any one body of water? The answer's no. Proposed action may involve dredging more than 100 cubic yards of material from a wetland or water body? No. Proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland under the dead or banks of any other water body? The answer would be no. Proposed action may create turbidity in a water body either from upland erosion runoff or by disturbing, disturbing bottom sediments? The answer to that would be no. Proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water from surface water? No. Proposed action may include construction of one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater to surface water? No. Proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies? That wouldn't go to any receiving water bodies, but we are asking for an additional drainage plan to be approved by our engineer. But it would not be to other receiving water bodies. The answer to this specific question would be no.
So, Michael, if that mitigation is accepted, or whatever they put forward, it's accepted. Then we'd answer that, no?
Well, this is basically saying stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies. It doesn't go to a water body.
Well, everything goes to a water body.
What?
It, it all goes to a water body.
Yeah, but from this, to get to the nearest water body, there's nothing nearby that, for example, on my property, there are ponds and streams and wetlands. And the water goes into those, there's no question. But on a dry area such as that, there's not a water body that we're receiving anything coming off of this property. It doesn't mean there cannot be erosion or stormwater issues, it just means it's not going into an existing water body.
No, I was talking about the one, the one above G, about for discharge. And if, so if they mitigate the drainage properly, you then label that no?
Well, it would be no because, because there's no outfall. It's not discharging wastewater. There is no wastewater plant.
Ah, okay.
It would not be discharging wastewater.
Okay.
Okay. I, the proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site for proposed action. The answer to that would be no. Proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides. The answer to that is no. Proposed action may require construction of new or extension of existing wastewater treatment facilities. The answer to that would be no. Okay. Other impacts on surface waters. I think since we answered no, I think the answer up above for surface water would be no. Moving on to impact on groundwater. Proposed action may result in new or additional uses of groundwater, or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or aquifer. First question, proposed action may require new water supply wells or create additional demand. The answer to that is no. Water supply demand from proposed action may exceed safety sustainable. I think that one's no. The proposed action may allow resulting residential uses in areas without water and sewer services? Okay. I would say that would be no. Proposed action may include or require wastewater discharge? No. Proposed action may result in the construction of water supply wells? No. Proposed action may require the bulk storage of petroleum or chemical products over groundwater or aquifer? The answer would be no. Proposed action may involve commercial application of pesticides in that. Any other impacts on groundwater? The answer above would be no. Impact on flooding. Proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. Proposed action may result in development in a designated floodwater? No. Proposed action may result in development in a 100-year floodplain? No. Proposed action may result in development in a 500-year floodplain? Could also be no. Proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns. I think once again, that to some extent goes to what we're asking for, that what Ray is asking for is a more detailed drainage plan to deal with stormwater runoff. I don't think it's going to modify the existing drainage patterns where the water's going. I think the issue here is to mitigate things from going offsite. So I think, my thinking would be the answer to that would be no.
So, in the Chakowsky's letter regarding specific space on the site, not the whole site?
Correct.
So we're going to, so it's a portion of it, not the whole thing?
Right, right. That's the areas. The proposed action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding. Not if we have a proper drainage plan as, as Ray is asking for. If there's a dam located, there's not a dam located on the site. Other impacts on flooding? I guess the answer is this one would be no. Impacts on air. Proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source. All right. If the proposed action requires federal or state air emission permits, it doesn't. I think we can just go down this one quickly. Proposed action may generate 10 tons per year or more of wind designated hazards air clean? The answer to that is no. I think the one above would also be no to each of those. Proposed action may require a state air regulation, registration, or may produce an emissions rate of total contaminant... I think the answer to that is no. Proposed action may reach 50 percent of any of the thresholds in A through C? No. Proposed action may result in combustion or thermal treatment of more than one ton of breakfast per hour? No. Any other impacts on air? That would probably be no up above. Okay. Impact on plants and animals. Proposed action may result in loss of flora or fauna. Proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found over or near the site. From the information we have, there's nothing that New York State has listed to be threatened or endangered species on the site of plant or animal. And I think from Eric Hibiop's report, he also felt that proposed action would not cause reduction in population or loss of any individuals of threatened or endangered species. So the answer to that would be no. Proposed action may result in reduction in degradation of any habitat used by any threat or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government. New York, neither New York State or the federal government have any listed threatened or endangered species on the site. Proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any species of special concern or conservation need as listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found on or near the site. And what Eric said, that would, that would not be so. Would be no also. Proposed action may result in reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any species of special concern or conservation need as listed by New York State or the federal government. The answer to that would be no.
For the category, just the clarification, no or small?
Right. And then also, it's limited to listed species of special concern or conservation need. You know, it does not necessarily mean, it isn't something that hasn't been listed, hasn't been discovered, but from what Eric Hibiop's report was, it would suggest that that would not be his project on the site itself. Proposed action may diminish the capacity of a registered national natural landmark to support biological community? No. Proposed action may result in removal of or ground disturbance of any portion of the designated significant natural community? No. Proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting, breeding, foraging, or overwintering habitat of predominant species that occupy or use the project site. Seeing one of the dominant species was deer, so I would think the answer probably would be no.
What's the key word here? Substantial?
Yeah, substantial, yeah. Proposed action requires conversion of more than 10 acres of forest? No. Proposed action, commercial industrial recreation involves use of herbicides, pesticides? No. Any other impacts that anyone can think of on plants and animals? No? The answer would be no. Impact on agricultural resources. Proposed action may impact agricultural resources. Proposed action may impact soil classified with the show of with 1 through 4 of the New York State land classification system. From my understanding is those would be the prime soils, and that this is neither 1 through 4. Does anyone have any indication otherwise? Proposed action may sever, cross, or otherwise limit access to agriculture? No. Proposed action may result in excavation or compaction of the soil profile of active agricultural land? No. Proposed action may universally convert agricultural land to non-agricultural uses, either more than 2.5 acres of local agricultural district or more than 10 acres of not-identical agricultural district? The answer would be no. Proposed action may disrupt or prevent installation of an agricultural land management system? No. Proposed action may result directly or indirectly in increased development potential or pressure on farming? The answer would be no. Proposed project is not consistent with the adopted municipal farm land protection plan. I don't believe we have one, so the answer would be no. Any other impacts on agricultural resources? Impact on aesthetic resources. The land used in proposed action are obviously different from or are in the scene from sharp contrast to current land used patterns between the proposed project and the scenic or aesthetic resource. Proposed action may be visible from any officially designated circle of state for a local scenic or aesthetic resource. I think one thing to recognize with SEACR, that's what they look at. What we have looked at in our regulations, and we are requiring screening for neighboring properties and that sort. But from a SEACR standpoint, it would be, because we have designated, written to those, a local scenic resource. We have a number of historic structures there. The effort we have made has been to try to make sure we have adequate screening. So my understanding would be would be no or small impact, but hopefully it's going to be no impact because the screening is supposed to obscure this project. Does that sound reasonable?
That's certainly my understanding from visiting the site many times.
Proposed action may result in the obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views? The answer would be no. Proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points, either seen still or viewed at? The answer to that is no. The situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work. People do use Wirtzberg, obviously. Recreational tourism activities, I don't think would have an impact on any of those, but clearly are tourism, and it has some good, bad practice there, and that sort. The answer would be no. Proposed action may cause a diminishment of public development appreciation of the designated aesthetic resource. The answer would be no, it's not a designated resource. There are similar projects visible within the following distance of proposed project. I don't think there are similar projects to my knowledge at this time. Anyone know? Anything else? It's probably no. Impact on historical archaeological resources. Proposed action may result in or may occur in or adjacent with historic or archaeological resource. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any buildings, archaeological site, or district which is listed on the National or State Registered Historic Places, or that has been determined by the Commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Registered Historic Sites. Well, the park. Let's see. I think that would probably be no or small impact. I think we do have a letter from, from the State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. See, they don't believe this would have any sort of a negative impact on the resources in that area. So maybe no. Proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an area designated as sensitive or archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory. That answer is no. They had nothing on their inventory. And we did, I believe there was also a study done of the site, a literature study done to see whether or not anything had been mentioned there. Proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an archaeological site not on the New York ship of inventory. I don't know of any.
I don't know many.
Does anyone know of any archaeological sites in that area? Other impacts? No? Impact on open space and recreation. Proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or induction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. At this point in time, I know that the Town of Ryndick has not adopted an open space plan, although there is one that was put together, and I don't know if it was officially adopted. The proposed action may result in impairment of natural functions or ecosystem services provided by undeveloped area, including not limited to stormwater storage, nutrient cycling, and wildlife habitat. I think the answer is no. Proposed action may result in the loss of a current or future recreational resource. I think the answer to that is no. Proposed action may eliminate open space or recreational use of this area through such resource. The answer would be no. Proposed action may result in loss of an area now used informally by the community as an open space resource. I think the answer to that is no. Any other impacts that anyone can think of? Impact on critical, critical environmental areas. Proposed action may be located in or adjacent to a critical environmental area. At the present time, we don't have any critical environmental areas in the Town of Ryndick, so the answer to this one would be no. I do believe that the residents, though, are working on trying to get the Wirtzberg area designated as a CBA.
What does that entail?
I'm sorry?
What does that entail?
It entails basically a lot of legwork, a lot of research, and then the town board has to adopt it. It's a, it's a process you have to, D E C also has to, also has to speak up to that, I think. We've never done it here, so I'm not entirely sure exactly what the process is. Impact on transportation. Proposed action may result in change to existing transportation systems. Projected traffic increase may exceed capacity of existing road network? The answer is no. Proposed action may result in the construction of paved parking area for 500 or more. No. Proposed action will degrade existing transit access? No. Proposed action will degrade existing pedestrian or bicycle accommodations? No. Proposed action may alter the present pattern of movement of cargo goods? I don't believe that's true. Any other impacts anyone can think of? Impact on energy. Proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy. Proposed action will require a new or an upgrade to an existing substation. I believe that's not so, sort of power lines over there. Proposed action will require the creation or extension of an energy transmission or supply system to serve 50 single or two-family residences or to serve additional rest or use? The answer to that would be no. Proposed action will utilize more than 2,500 megawatt hours per year of electricity? No. Proposed action may involve heating and cooling more than 100,000 square feet of building? No. Any other impacts? Impact on noise, odor, and light. Proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. Proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation. I think from our study that Ray did, we think that answer is no. Proposed action may result in blasting within it? No. Proposed action may result in routine odors? No. Proposed action may result in light shining onto adjoining properties? The answer would be no. Proposed action may result in lighting creating a sky glow brighter than existing area conditions? The answer to that would be no. Any other impacts for noise, odor, or light? No? Impact on human health. Proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. Proposed action is located within 1,500 feet of school, hospital, lessons, daycare centers, group home, nursing home, or retirement theater. Don't believe so. The site of proposed action is currently undergoing remediation. My knowledge it is not. There is completed emergency spill remediation, a completed environmental site remediation on or adjacent to the site of the proposed action. What we got from D E C, they have no report of any spill on that site that required remediation. And we haven't, nothing else has been presented to document otherwise. The site of the action is subject to an institutional control limiting the use of the property. It's under deed prescription, not my knowledge. The proposed action may affect institutional control measures that were put in place to ensure the site remains protected by the environment and human health. The answer is no. The proposed action has adequate control measures in place to ensure the future generation, treatment, and or disposal of renewable hazardous wastes here. The proposed action involves construction or modification of a solid waste management facility. No? The proposed action may result in inearthing of solid or hazardous waste. No? The proposed action may result in an increase in the rate of disposal and processing of solid waste. No? The proposed action may result in excavation or other distribution of 2,000 feet of a site used for disposal of solid hazardous waste. No? The proposed action may result in mitigated migration of explosive gases from a landfill site to adjacent offsite structures. No? The proposed action may result in the release of contaminated leachate from the project site. The answer would be no. Any other impacts on human health? Consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. Yes or no? The proposed action's land use components may be different from or in sharp contrast to current surrounding land use patterns. That's one of the questions we've been looking at. And I think we would answer that as yes. The proposed action will cause the permanent population of the city, town, or village where this project is located to grow by more than 5%. No? The proposed action is inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations. The answer for that would be no. The proposed action is inconsistent with any county plans or other regional land use plans. The answer for that would be no. The proposed action may cause a change in the density of the development that is not supported by existing infrastructure or is distinctly existing infrastructure. The proposed action is located in an area characterized by low-density development that requires new expanded land use infrastructure. No? The proposed action may induce secondary development impacts, i.e., residential or commercial development, not included in proposed action. No? Any other impacts? Okay, the one that we have, we will get back to, is moderate or large impact may occur. The proposed action's land use components may be different from or in sharp contrast to current surrounding land use patterns. And that's, that one, I think is one we need to discuss, take a look at. John has any thoughts, or Jim has any thoughts on that? Our zoning law permits, our comprehensive plan has been encouraging renewable energy resources. This is the first of its kind in the town, so clearly it is different from and in sharp contrast to the current surrounding land use patterns. I guess the question that we've had before us through this entire review procedure over the last, around two years, is whether or not there will be any negative impact on the surrounding land use. From the standpoint of the studies we've had done, from the visibility standpoint, noise standpoint, lighting standpoint, impact on habitat, on animals, water, things like that, I think we might be able to come to the conclusion that it won't have a negative impact on any of that. But what would the negative impact be outside of what we've had studied and what we've had our consultants look at the studies submitted to this board?
Which number are you on?
Seventeen A.
Okay. So remember, there's a distinction between this one, this item is talking about community plans, and eighteen talks about community character, something that's also going to be of concern to you.
It seems that in this particular one, the overall answer would be no, because our comp plan and our zoning law all have been developed to try and encourage a use such as this. I think the next one will have some other issues that we managed to discuss, but my only feeling on this, but the overall answer would be no.
Well, I think, I would agree that the overall answer is no. I mean, I don't think we're debating that seventeen A shouldn't be moderate to large. We acknowledge that it is in sharp contrast. But I also think that all the plans we've been putting in place for mitigation are attempting to address the fact that there is a difference, a contrast between the surrounding land use patterns of this. So I think that some are starting to mitigate the impact.
That's in the effort. My, we know that my feeling on this, the consistency with community plans would be the answer no, is not improperly, it's not inconsistent with an adopted land use plan. On the contrary, it's, it is consistent. Anyone else have anything else to say?
Well, I would say it's consistent with the, with the law that allowed it. It's true, but it's not consistent with what's been there before, and so it's true.
But that's...
It doesn't change that answer.
It doesn't change seventeen A. But seventeen itself, that question is the, Adam is asking, proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. It is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and the zoning. So the answer would be no. Okay, I think this one, Eric, I think is just what you were moving on. Consistency with community character. Proposed project is inconsistent with existing community character. The proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facilities, structures, or areas of historic importance to the community. The answer is no. The proposed action may create a demand for additional community services, schools, police fire. The proposed action may displace a form of low-income housing in an area where there is a shortage of such housing. The proposed action may interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources. The answer is no. The proposed action is inconsistent with predominant architecture, scale, and character.
You'd have to say yes to that one.
Well, predominant architectural scale, certainly not. It's almost seventeen tall.
Well, it's also a lot wider than most other structures in that area too, so wider, longer, just because it's not that high. It's not the scale. Three dimensions to scale.
Yeah. Well, how does anyone else feel about that? Do they feel that should be yes, moderate or large impact may occur? I think that's a fair answer. I mean, it could.
But if you say yes, then must you automatically assume that moderate or large impact may occur?
No, it just that it may occur. What we've been trying to do is develop a plan with the applicant that would mitigate any potential for those impacts, but the project itself may interfere with the, I'm sorry, the proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant architectural character and scale of the area. And in a sense it is, I think as Eric has pointed out. But the whole process that we've gone through is to try to mitigate that inconsistency, that change, such that we will not, it would not have a negative impact on the character, predominant architectural scale and character of the area, because you're not going to see it, hear it, smell it, taste it, anything like that. That's my understanding, John. Wouldn't that be the way that you would identify that it could potentially harm the architectural scale?
Well, I, the question is asking us whether it is, as it, as the project has been submitted, the proposed action is inconsistent with predominant architectural scale and character. As is with no mitigation, I would agree, it is inconsistent. It does not reflect the architectural scale and character of what's surrounding the area.
If it was consistent, you wouldn't be spending a lot of effort on screening.
Right. So, I mean, I think it, for me, falls clearly to moderate to large impact. That doesn't mean that I wouldn't agree to it, it simply means that it has to be mitigated and addressed as something that's having an impact.
And I think that you would agree if we were to say that, that, you know, potential adverse visual impact has been the, probably the potential adverse impact that has taken up most of your attention throughout the review thus far.
You'd have to go forward.
And then final question, proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape. I think we could say yes to that for the same reason.
Yes.
So for this one, I think consistency with community character, I think we would probably have to say yes, until we get to part three. I think that's when we look at mitigation or what about that?
Yes.
Well, we're on to part three. I think we're on to part three. Um, I think we're on to part three.
I don't have a part three either.
I do. Oh, okay.
So, part three, for those of you who may not be familiar, part three of the environmental assessment form is where you as the lead agency have an opportunity to discuss, if you're considering a negative declaration, to discuss ways in which, if you've identified potential impacts, ways which those have been mitigated as part of the review process. And so I'm handing out to you a draft of an environmental assessment form, part three, which is designed to, the decision is yours, okay? We know a little bit about the kinds of things that are of concern to the board and concern to members of the public, just because we've been able to observe the comments that have been made at public hearings. The purpose of what we've given you is not to make the decision for you, I want to be very clear about that. Anything that's on that draft is something that can be changed or should be changed if you're going to agree with it, but what we did want to try to provide you with was at least somewhere to get started, so you could get a chance to see what a typical part three of an environmental assessment form looks like and how the issues are addressed. So you will see that on that form, we've addressed not only, for a start, for you, addressed not only some of the items that you answered yesterday, but also some of the other items that even though you've answered no, we thought that the process would benefit from a good explanation about, you know, why you would check for the boxes that you didn't check.
Excuse me, John?
Yes?
Who's the lead you're talking about?
Kim.
Okay.
I think what, I'll also let you know that Art Rowe did a draft secret determination for us back about, almost been a year ago.
Yeah.
And it was a neg [inaudible]. And I took that, I also put something together on some other things that I already did, and a whole history of what we've done in our reviews, and I gave all of that to John and to Jim for them to go over and see what they...
And that material has been incorporated into what we've given you as a [inaudible].
All right, I think the one that we need to discuss is consistency with community character, since we've said no to all the other ones, so perhaps we ought to go right to that with information John just gave us.
Just maybe it would be some more, we might have just read it.
That's what I thought I would do, that's, that's, because then the people here can all see character. Okay. Question eighteen, consistency with community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with existing community character, to which we answer yes. Analysis, residential neighbors have expressed their concerns of allowing the commercial use of the residential zone. The property is owned as rural countryside RC5. As stated in zoning law, the purpose of the RC5 district is to maintain the town's historic pattern of rural, forested, and agricultural settlements, characterized by large expanses of open space and unspoiled views from the road, scattering of residences, farms, and other businesses, and cluster, excuse me, cluster developments surrounded by open space. The planning board is sensitive to the residential neighbors' concerns and have taken great interest in assuring adequate screening and landscape plan to mitigate potential visual impacts and impacts on the character of the area. As has been demonstrated through the above cited work undertaken by the applicant's consultants under review by the planning board's advisors, and particularly the set forth in the discussions of impact on aesthetic resources and impact on historic and archaeological resources, in consideration of the modifications of the project plans, including the extent of the leased parcel and the extent of screening, potential impacts on community character have been satisfactorily addressed during the environmental review process. Moreover, the planning board has noted, the town of Brinebeck zoning law permits solar power plants in the RC5 zoning district subject to a special use permit and site plan review, and further, the town of Brinebeck comprehensive plan advocates the use of solar power, and further that the proposed development is consistent with the standards for a solar power plant as set forth in section 12547 of Town Code, Chapter 125 Zoning. Conclusion, the solar power plants are especially permitted use in the RC5 zoning district. The effort has demonstrated sufficient screening to mitigate visual impacts to adjacent residential neighbors and historic buildings, which are consistent with the town of Brinebeck zoning law, section 125I14 and section 12548. Leasing of the entire property ensures that the landscaping and screening will be continually maintained. Given the extent of screening, landscaping, and further visual mitigation, there will be little to no impact to the rural and residential community character.
Now, I want to tell you that this really ties back to earlier, there's a much more extensive discussion to question nine, which is the impact to aesthetic resources, which is there. There's a more detailed discussion about screening and what's been done about visual impact.
I can, I can read that. Should I read that?
Yes.
Okay, it's on the record.
And again, this is just a starter, okay? This is a draft, this is just to get your conversation started.
Okay, analysis, as stated in the full environmental assessment form, work was published by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. The question explores consistency in land use between the proposed project and other land uses that may be seen from or are part of a scenic or aesthetic resource. It is oriented to those scenic and aesthetic resources that are officially designated and publicly accessible. Visual impact has been greatly discussed by the planning board and members of the public. For this reason, the planning board has taken interest in both the aesthetic impacts to both publicly designated areas as well as from adjoining private properties. Although there are no officially designated federal, state, or scenic, local, or aesthetic resources near the proposed project site, the planning board was concerned about potential impacts to residential properties nearby. To address this potential impact, the planning board requested Hudson Solar engage a landscape design consultant to carry the visual assessment of the proposed development. Hudson Solar retained Saratoga Associates for this purpose, and the firm issued a letter of report with attached figures entitled Visual Impact Analysis directly to the planning board on Jan, on January 22nd, 2018. The planning board referred the report to be peer-reviewed by George James AICP and George M. James and Associates. George M. James and Associates is a planning firm with particular expertise and experience on visual impact simulations and assessment. Mr. James recommended additional analysis be undertaken to corroborate Saratoga Associates' assertion that both the potential visual impact of proposed community solar or the Voltaic project is minor or concord, and in tandem with the planning board, recommended additional viewing locations identified by the public be considered. Saratoga Associates subsequently issued an amended report entitled, and we do have that pending, the planning board and the public were showing a presentation on this amended report on May 7th, 2018. The evergreen planting mitigation measures recommended by Saratoga Associates have been incorporated by Hudson Solar in its updated site plan, and very significantly, Hudson Solar has agreed to modify its lease agreement with the property owner very sure on to control the entirety of the ladder's parcel. This allows the applicant to ensure the maintenance of existing vegetation throughout the overall process, this vegetation having been identified throughout all of the visual analysis of a key component in substantially limiting, if not fully eliminating, visibility of the proposed community solar way from all of the considered public and private viewing locations. Screening continues to be a topic of discussion by the public, and the applicant continues to respond to those concerns. Tower trees have been incorporated to provide more immediate screening to residential homes. Additional trees have been added to further screen the project, particularly on the east side of the project. The roadway to access the panels have been curbed through the potential lines of sight from residential neighbors. Conclusion, visual assessment has been heavily discussed at the planning board meetings among members of the planning board and members of the public. As such, the applicant's proposed screening and landscape plan has mitigated these impacts. While this project may not be completely invisible from some residential neighbors, the applicant has been responsive to substantially reduce the visual impacts to residential neighbors, and the impacts will be small. Where permitted, the applicant has visited adjacent properties to evaluate potential visual impacts. The applicant heavily relies on existing vegetative screening and will add additional evergreen trees to mitigate visual sight from adjacent properties. The applicant will lease the entire property from the owner so as to ensure continued maintenance over all of the vegetative screening, and will hire a qualified landscape contractor to continually monitor and maintain the necessary screening to mitigate visual impacts from the proposed project. I guess at this point, I guess the discussion is, and I think that Melody... I guess the discussion is, and I think that Melody brought this up earlier. We did say yes to the potential consistency with community character. The two things that we said yes to are the proposed actions inconsistent with the predominant contractual scaling character and the proposed actions inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape. From what I just read, the feeling is, from what I read is that those impacts have been mitigated through a more extensive landscaping plan and a means to try and maintain that landscape. Eric.
It says here that the potential impacts on community character have been satisfactorily addressed. Who's the arbiter of it being satisfactorily addressed?
The planning board.
Okay.
Here's the exact standard.
So this would be our statement here.
Yes.
Yes.
And do the, do the members of the community have any say in what the character of that community is?
We've had eleven public hearings up to this point.
I know, and like been against it all the way, I mean, almost every neighbor has been against this thing.
And I know you're opposed and I recognize the opposition. But the opposition, all the different reasons for opposition that have been brought up, we've tried to address to the very best of our ability.
I know, but the changing, the character of this has not been, been, I mean, we're saying it's been mitigated, but the neighbors don't seem to think it's mitigated.
That doesn't mean it hasn't been mitigated.
Well, what does mean it hasn't been mitigated?
It's a decision of the board, you're the lead agency under SEER.
Okay.
So the decision is yours as a board.
All right.
And Eric, what has not been mitigated?
You know, I'm not a member of the community, so evidently they don't think it's been mitigated.
So. Let me, let me add one other thing that might be helpful. So, secret state statute, all right? The authority to implement it has been designated to local boards when the action is local and you're the lead agency. Okay, the agency that is in charge pursuant to SEER to conduct the environmental review of this project. You are required to look at the potential adverse environmental impacts that may come from this project. And as lead agency, you, it's your obligation to endeavor to ensure that all of those significant potential adverse environmental impacts are mitigated to the maximum extent practicable of the rules. If you go to court, that's the rule that applies. So you're looking at significant adverse environmental impacts that we've identified and then the question is whether you think as a board, they have been mitigated to the maximum extent practicable.
And we just went through part two and we answered no, any potential impact.
What part two where for?
That was part two that we just did. We went through, you know, noise, odor, land, groundwater, surface waters, everything. That's what we just went through, each one, as far as a significant impact, we answered no.
Right, but the community character, the answer was yes.
No, not, not, not in total.
Not in total.
One question in that section was answered yes, but in total, that section was answered no.
Okay, so, but, I mean, we are now with, all right?
One of the things, let me say that one of the things that strikes me in this, in thinking about this project, as opposed to other projects that we might be looking at, is that everything that's being proposed to happen here can be taken away. I'm not, I'm not saying it is something that makes people happy living here now. But if it went away tomorrow, the impact to the land is minimal.
Okay, so the long-term impact.
Yeah, and I, and I do acknowledge there's a difference between a short-term now impact, but also important to me is, is there a long-term impact that's irreversible? And, and I don't see that.
Yeah, I'll agree with that.
So that, that is a factor for me in thinking about this as a project, just as a project in general. That, that's just a statement of where I'm coming from in one regard.
Okay, but that, I mean, changing the character of a neighborhood for twenty-five years in effect changes the character of that neighborhood for, for a lot longer than that.
But I think we're saying that the mitigations, at least, at least it seems to be that we're saying that we've gone to great extent to provide mitigations to the impact that will lessen to a significant degree the impact on the.
The impact in our estimation.
But we're the ones charged.
Well, I understand, but the impact of the people impacted by it doesn't seem to have changed.
It may never change.
That's true. So why, how can we just then say that we can put anything where we want, because.
Because we're charged with that.
I mean, what, I mean, shouldn't have this gone to a referendum before it was even said that they can, what if they said you can put it, all of it on your property and you have nothing to say that? I mean, it just seems like. Well, it might be a different subject, but it's where we find ourselves.
That's a question of the solar law. It's not a question of the application before us now.
We, the planning board.
Well, it's not the character of the neighborhood, it seems to be.
Well, we've gone over everything that we believe, or certainly that I believe could negatively impact the character of a neighborhood. I mean, from my own position.
But you're not a member of the neighborhood, so you don't feel.
We're all a member of the neighborhood, we're not, if we're going to start to balkanize the town's ground, we're going to get into a very serious trouble. We're all part of one neighborhood, we're all part of one community, we all live here.
That's exactly right.
We all deal with things that we may not be totally in love with, you know, right by our homes, things of that sort. Some of us have very significant traffic issues going by our properties, but the whole community needs to use those roadways, so it's something we deal with. We, I believe, in my opinion, and it is my opinion, we have looked at every potential negative impact that this project would have on a community and found that those impacts, given the plans that we have, assuming those plans are properly carried out and properly maintained, those impacts have been mitigated. I don't see how this particular project, in my opinion, would negatively impact this neighborhood.
This is, this is the debate that you're supposed to.
Exactly, exactly.
This is part of how the board members are not always going to have exactly the same opinions about things. And, and you know, this is the forum and this is the time for everybody to speak their mind with regard to their other concerns.
And I would ask everyone here to speak up. Edna?
Well, I do have a thought. If you take the Rockledge project, it is a multifamily development in an area that is all single-family houses. You could argue, and I think some neighbors would argue, that it definitely changes the character of the neighborhood. Because it's, you know, RC five and it's supposed to be five-acre zoning and single-family houses. But there is a zoning law and the purpose of the planning board is not for the neighbors to all come together and take a vote. I mean, that's why we have a zoning law, otherwise.
They should have voted before they even asked for the zoning law.
Perhaps you're right, but we are now the planning board, we have zoning law on the books and our job is to carry out that zoning law. And I actually think, I guess it's my view, that we don't have the right to nullify something that we don't like. In other words, if we don't like a part of the zoning law, we don't have the right to say, well, you know what? I don't like that, so I'm going to vote no, because that's not what our job is. I mean, we've sort of taken oath to, to the best of our ability, carry out the zoning law.
My response to that is two things. First of all, the, the Rockledge project, a few neighbors had problems with it, but almost all of them said that they're not against the project per se. They just have concerns about it. So that's, that puts a different, well, that's, that's pretty much what I heard, there might have been one or two, but it's the difference between that and one or two neighbors saying that they just don't want it and this one, none of the neighbors want. So that, that to me is a big difference. But also the fact that we have this character of the neighborhood aspect that is, I mean, we're, we're the ones that are saying that whether that, that's been mitigated or not. And to me, the only feedback on whether it's mitigated is if the neighbors think it's mitigated. And I haven't heard any of them speak up and say, yeah, I'm satisfied with this now, I'm okay with this, let's do it. To my knowledge, they're still all highly against this. So where does that put us in terms of, are we working against our neighbors to get some of this commercial thing that gets put in so somebody can make some money? It doesn't make sense in a, in a community sort of way to do, to take that approach.
I think that, and I think this was Edna was speaking to, and I think also Melody. The town board is our legislative body, our policymaking body. They determine what will be in the town plan, they determine what will be in the zoning law. The zoning administrator, the Z E O, is authorized to interpret that law, not change it or alter it, but interpret what it really means. Oftentimes, it's not terribly clear. The Z B A has the authority to grant variances, both area and use variances, from the zoning law. They can't modify it, but they can be relieved from the different aspects of it. They can also hold a rule, the building inspector and the zoning enforcement officers' determinations. The planning board, we are strictly limited to administering the law to following all those shells in Articles five, six, and seven, to say we shall do this, we shall do that. And the same with the SEER, as lead agency, we're required to go through this long form as part two and answer these questions. And from a legal standpoint, if we answer no to these questions, as we have done for every different thing we've looked at, legally, we've done our job legally, we're basically entitled to go by that.
This one aspect of the character of the community, which you're saying has been satisfactorily addressed, or the draft set has been satisfactorily addressed. I can't imagine that we can make that statement without including the input from the neighbors on whether it's been satisfactory.
We have included, we have included their input, I think.
We've included their input and then ignored it.
I disagree.
I disagree with, we've ignored it. I think that the fact that they have made the compelling case.
Not in terms of.
Let me finish, please. The fact that they have continued to make compelling case has continued to make us ask the questions and to do the studies that we've done. We've encountered, we've encouraged and, and applicant is paid for, study after study and we've asked, all of us, and we'll continue to ask tonight, if anyone can think of another study that will address any questions, I think this board would continue to look at those questions. But the studies are not suggesting the answer that, that you leave us out there. The studies that we've called for suggest that the, the impact is not that great.
I think another thing, Eric, you have to think about, which, you know, I think maybe you disagree with, but I think it's in there. There's nothing in our zoning law, zoning law directs us what we have to look at. If you look at all the special regulations and site plan and everything, it directs us what to look at. Nowhere in the zoning law does public opposition to a project as even mentioned as something that we should be looking at. We should be looking at, because the applicant has rights as well. And what we're supposed to do, what the zoning law is supposed to do, and what our job is supposed to be, is to make sure that the law itself, for any given application, is every regulation, every requirement is met to the fullest extent practicable. That's what our job is.
So that makes us the sole arbiter of what the character of the neighborhood is?
In this particular instance.
Somebody has to be in a position to make the decision.
Okay, and, and that's the.
And that's going to be the thing. Let, let me interject if I may.
But there's one more thing I'd just like to add, just to like to add. I think, actually, Eric, since we're restricted to the zoning law, the town board has already made that decision because they gave us this law to enforce. They adopted the town plan and they adopted this zoning law.
So that automatically changed the character of the neighborhood?
All I can say is they determined that what's in the zoning law would not do that if we follow our job properly and make sure that any potential impact would be mitigated. It's a policy decision, the town board makes the policy decision, it's not the planning board.
So we have nothing to say about the character of the neighborhood?
We have a great deal to say insofar as the zoning law tells us what we have to look at, what we have to study, what the criteria are, what the thresholds are.
Did the.
Can, can, let me just try to help out and focus things. You, you guys are thinking about the right things, but so there's going to be, there are going to be two decis, two key decisions that the board will be making with regard to this project, all right? The first decision that you're going to be making is making your determination of significance under SEER, okay? A state law that you are, as lead agency, have been given the authority to make the decision on. And under that law, the, the immediate decision that's in front of you right now is whether to issue a negative declaration for this project, meaning that with the mitigation measures that have been incorporated into the plan as a result of the review that has taken place thus far, or does that remove any significant adverse environmental impacts from the project? And if you find that that's the case with the mitigation in place, then you can issue a negative declaration and then the state environmental review comes to an end, all right? The other alternative, again, still talking about SEER, is to issue a positive declaration. And that means that even after the changes that have been made to the plan up to this point, you're still finding that there is a significant adverse environmental impact that has been identified and not mitigated to the maximum extent practicable. And what a positive declaration means is that there's a, it's kicking off another stage of review. It means that an environmental impact statement would be required to, it's just a structure that's provided to study the, the significant adverse environmental impact which has not been mitigated to this point and to figure out what the mitigation should be. And so that's the immediate question that's in front of you. There, there's a second decision that you'll be making, which will be whether to grant special use permit and site plan approval for this project. And in that instance, you're going to be using the zoning law as your checklist and standard to see whether or not the project, as it's been revised, meets the standards that are set forth in the zoning law. You're not yet there yet, though, because the state says that you have to make your SEER determination first. So you need, you know, you should be focusing your thinking right now on, in the context of this discussion, on SEER. And that has to do with identified potential adverse, significant potential adverse environmental impacts and whether they have been mitigated to the maximum extent practicable such that you're comfortable with issuing a negative declaration or whether you think there are significant adverse environmental impacts that have not been mitigated and that a positive declaration is required.
But this character, this question on character of the neighborhood is part of the SEER, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if that, I mean, if it's not mitig, I mean, if it has changed the character of the neighborhood and there's nothing that's changed that's changed in the character of the neighborhood, then that would be a positive declaration.
Yes, a person could have a positive declaration.
What do you, you like that?
No, I think the, your counsel that you're giving us today has been very helpful.
I agree, thank you for that.
Is anyone else?
I haven't been in attendance long enough to, if you want to offer anything that I feel comfortable with. But thank you for the input and thank you for asking.
You're welcome. Edna?
Well, I would say, after visiting the site many, many times and listening to all the questions and the answers, that my view is that with the mitigation, it does not significantly alter the character of the neighborhood. And the reason I say that is it cannot now be seen from any residents. The applicant has been willing to add taller mortaried trees so that in the one case where there was some visibility from an upstairs location that is taken care of, they've added plantings along the east side, which I think was the only area that really didn't have any foliage screening in. So it, it can't be seen, I don't believe, from any residents. What remains then is the idea of it. You know, the, the idea that there is this thing there even though I cannot see it, smell it, hear it, there's no particular traffic to it and so forth. And the fact that it can be there was up to the town board, they decided that it was possible for it to be there. They decided that it was possible for it to be there. That's not our decision. You know, its mere existence is not something we have anything to say about. So where I come down is, I believe that the mitigation is sufficient so that it does not significantly change the character of the neighborhood.
Oh.
Well, I think I've made most of my points earlier, and I, and I agree with that. It also reminds me, as a community member, as a resident of Rhinebeck, because the one thing that hasn't been mentioned is, the solar law went through its own process of review. That included public hearings and the opportunity for any of us who wanted to comment on what was being proposed to do so. And when we don't do that, you know, we have to, we have to live with the consequences of not being active part of our community in terms of zoning and all the land use issues. So it wasn't that there wasn't an opportunity while the law was being discussed and debated for people to weigh in. The law can be looked at again, and undoubtedly will be looked at again, but right now, we're dealing with a law as exists. You all know I feel strongly about historic preservation. I thought long and hard about this project in terms of the impact it would have on historic resources. And because they can't be seen, because this can't be seen, I don't see a diminution in the significance of the historic resources or the road. I feel strongly that Wurtemberg Road is one of the most scenic, well-known roads in the town, and I'm encouraging the residents there to get their critical environmental assessment done. I would encourage them further to get the neighborhood on the National Register as a cultural resource. There are ways of protecting it, and we have to do those things if we value these things in our community. We have to be proactive about identifying them and not waiting until there's an emergency and then having to deal with it. And I'm using the emergency word loosely here, because I don't think it's an emergency. I think this use is compatible to the neighborhood with all of the mitigations that we've put in place. And like, as Edna said, you're not going to see it. I live on Route Nine, and I don't like the idea of living on Route Nine, but darn, it's there. And so, you know, progress happens, life goes on, and changes occur in the community, and solar law is something, a solar community, solar, what, a race, excuse me, are things we're all getting used to. But I think this has been a very healthy dialogue, and I commend the neighbors for taking seriously their community and working with us for Loews. I mean, when I looked at this, and it was like we received the visual analysis a year ago, it's like, really? Well, we, no one can accuse us of not actively listening and studying the questions surrounding this application, but I believe that we're at the point where I don't see that it is impacting the community character unnecessarily negatively.
I just have a comment. Both of you ladies summed the whole thing up, I concur with you completely. Thank you.
Eric?
Well, I'd say what I have, I disagree with that, Eric. We've, you know, it has been satisfactorily addressed, because the neighbors are obviously not satisfied with the situation.
I guess everything's been pretty well said. I think my position, obviously, I've gone back and forth on this as we reviewed it and looked at it. I obviously favor solar energy. I've had solar panels on my property now for 14 years, and I have a very healthy pollinator garden laying underneath it. At the same time, I know that there's a difference, and we're having, we discussed this about some other things tonight. Policy in a government is done by the legislative body. The planning board is an administrative body. We're not doing our job, we're not being fair to all people, applicants, neighbors, everyone in the community, if we don't follow the law and treat everyone equally and fairly. Applicants have rights, neighbors have rights, we all have rights. The zoning law is an attempt to try and balance everyone's interests and well-being. Doesn't always work. We know that the zoning law needs help in a lot of different places, and we do work on that. On the whole, I don't see how this can harm this community. I think there are a number of uses, and it could very easily go in there, it could have a negative impact on the character, but also on the environment, on all the different aspects that we've just studied for this. I find that this could be a very benign project. I think that it is not something that will harm community character, I genuinely don't. There are many things that have happened in Rhinebeck, I mean, I guess I've been here for 44 years now, and I remember when the streets, you know, rolled up at four o'clock and woke up at six in the morning. We're a completely different community, we've gone through so many changes. We used to have more than one dairy, for example. We've got a lot more and more of our rural character that's gone. Rhinebeck has changed, I think for the, in many ways, the changes have been very positive, have been very good. There are many things that are going to happen, that are going to be new to people, and none of us really like change, new things, if it seems to be something that might potentially negatively impact what we know and love. I genuinely don't believe this will hurt the community and Wurtemberg Road. If I did believe that, I would not be able to support it, but I genuinely don't believe it will. I'm in favor of a neg deck on this, and my own feeling, after all the information we've gathered, is to approve this project and make sure that it's done according to the plans that have been submitted. I guarantee the planning board and the zoning force will also make sure of that. We're doing it with a renewal every three years, although I believe we'd require a renewal after the first year so that we can actually assess what's happened up there and actually make sure that it's doing what it's supposed to do. What I would like to do is ask for a consensus, and I think I have that of the five members of the board up here, who, you know, as Kathy, I understand would like to, you know, abstain, she hasn't been part of this process for the last few years. Do you have a consensus?
You can vote if you want.
Yeah. We have a consensus, and I think we'd like to ask John and Jim to put together a resolution, a negative neg deck on this project, negative, significant, negative environmental impact created by this project, for us to consider at our February fourth meeting. And at that time, the public hearing will be recontinued for people to speak up. It's by intent at that meeting, once the, if the planning board doesn't adopt the neg deck, which I imagine you will, then we will be in a position to close the public hearing, and that at our next meeting, you have approval resolution to consider, which we would ask Jim and John to put together for us.
Okay, let's talk about that for a second. So the, so we will work with Jim, and we'll try to circulate the draft of a negative declaration, it's really going to be part P A of part three, to reflect the board members' views on this. And we're going to try to do that sufficiently in advance of the next meeting, that if you have comments or you want to see something changed, or what have you, that we can accomplish that in the board meeting.
This is a very good start.
It's a decent start, but this is the, these views that are expressed, it's very important that they be the views of the board members.
And we are having this recorded, so if there's any questions instead, you can debate them.
And I'm glad that we, I'm very glad that we had a robust discussion about this, because you have to do that. A lot of effort went into this on both sides of the equation, and everybody who's associated with this application deserves to have a debate and a thought process that affords the importance of the situation. Once Seeker is completed, you'll be free to close the public hearing, and you may be choosing to do that at the next meeting, and neighbors should be aware of the fact that that public hearing may be the last point at which the board will be accepting public comment on this. The next stage will be shifting, if you do adopt a negative declaration, then the board will be shifting to the question of approving this application, creating site plan, special use permit approval. You should take a look at the zoning law, it'd be a good time to re-familiarize yourselves with the criteria that has been set forth in the zoning law for those approvals. And I think that if you're moving to that stage, that the most important element of that approval is going to have to do with the conditions that get attached to the approval. A lot of effort went into requesting information and changes in the plan from the applicant that would, in other words, the, the lack, the board's decision that the impacts have been mitigated are directly dependent upon the success of the mitigation measures, and making sure that those measures are implemented completely. So the conditions, I think that this is an application where an extra effort needs to be made by board members to make sure that there is a very detailed, all the conditions that are in your minds about, you know, things that have come before the board up through the course of the review, and Jim and Kim and I will try to help you with that, but we need to make sure that those are all identified, and then the board needs to make sure that there's enough specificity. And I'm suggesting that the final approvals should incorporate the final set of site plan drawings and the final narrative that's been submitted by the applicant, so that somebody who comes along 15 years from now after we're gone is going to be able to look at that decision and understand exactly what it is that was being required, so that there can be an integrity of the implementation and maintenance of the conditions throughout the entire life of our project. So that's going to be an important stage, and it'd be good to be doing something when you got that now.
Thank you. I think we're all set then for this, for this evening. We have two more issues on our agenda. What I'll do is I'll just, we'll just sort of recess for a couple minutes, if everyone else doesn't want to stay here for our discussion of rubies and affordable housing, so anyone who'd like to leave and some share can come back up here, and then we'll get started. The next board considers the zoning petition from Rubies.
Thank you again, as always.
Thank you, guys.
Really appreciate your work.
I appreciate the way you guys have handled your concerns, where you brought them to us. Basically, I think it's made it a much, much better application, and I think there are things that otherwise would have been thrown about, who wouldn't see it.
Agreed. I want to say that we were able to attend a class training session, which was a really excellent thing. You guys did a terrific job, I think you guys listened in, and that was very important. You can see the importance to other towns as well, so.
It was a real eye-opener. I didn't know how much I didn't know about short-term rentals. It was quite an education.
Is there any scheduled action that comes from that, as a project?
At this point, we're hoping that the town board is going to be establishing...
Going back to policy.
The policy, yeah. The town board, we'd like them to set up a group to actually go after that, to really look into, among a number of other things, but that's one of the things we really believe we desperately need to get, get a handle on. The building inspector just gave me a very interesting supplement, technical supplement to the state building code and whatnot, which may have an impact on this in terms of requirements for some of these rental-type things. These already have to go through a lot. This, though, is a very, it's a very interesting technical supplement that I've just been reading, it's like this, this could have some technical changes on things like Airbnb's, things like that.
I think we'd also like to keep the dialogue going among the neighboring communities and the county.
And how do we sit on, I know we've caught on to the fact that the meeting is happening, which is a little...
I agree. Yeah. Well, we haven't even reconvened the group that was here to know how they want to communicate, but...
We haven't been reappointed yet, so we haven't...
But isn't it true, Michael, that if you check the town website once a week or so, you'll see?
That's pretty good on the calendar.
That's coming up.
And they're usually announce meetings and things like that on that.
I guess if the training, maybe the training session wasn't up there, I didn't see it.
It was up there kind of late, because it was kind of, because of the holidays and everything else, by the time we got it all nailed down and things like that, I think it was a week before we actually did it.
Yeah, and it wasn't an official meeting. Right. I didn't even hear about it.
Lucky you, I now have access to all of the slides for that, which I can provide you with, and Panda has a full recording of it for your entertainment.
We did announce it at the...
Yeah. And it, it really was tremendous. It turned up as something we needed. We have about 50 people here from all the surrounding towns, as well as Rhinebeck.
And the county.
And the county was here, the commissioner of land.
The county was thrilled.
And I really want to say that, in seeing it, listening in, I was really impressed by that you guys weren't starting from here, right? That there was a level of knowledge base, thanks to John and his, his team, that they, that there, there's already, you know, awareness about who's doing what where, and I think that it's important to, to do this in conjunction, so that it's not every single little town and municipality and village that has to keep reinventing the wheel.
Yeah. We do hope that the county working with us too, because it would be nice to do it on a county-wide basis, rather than have each municipality have their own set of regulations.
No, it's tough, because they're out against events.
I know, yeah.
To change, to change.
I think county planning's vision is to provide data and maybe a template, but I think that they would prefer to, based on my conversations with them, to allow communities to customize the approach themselves. But they definitely see it as a big issue, and they're working actively on it, and they are going to figure out some way to support the localities moving forward on this, but and providing a regional professional, several...
Is the last question, February fourth, what's the likelihood that's going to be the last public hearing?
It's probably very good.
Very likely?
Yeah, very likely.
And then is that the night of the vote as well?
That's the night of the vote on Seeker determination of significance. The vote on actual special use permit and site plan will be the following meeting in February.
Or thereafter.
Or thereafter. Depend, or thereafter.
Right. And thank you all again, really.
Thank you. Jeff? Jeff? I have here, I don't think you've received, you have the latest message from Ray?
I just got a question.
Oh, okay. That's always a valid thing. Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for Rubies. And basically, what we have, and we have people here, if you want to just come up, anyone else present on the town board? I know we've had a couple of discussions. This is basically a, you've seen the petition for adding a use to the Office Research Park in Welcome Back Share, the Office Research Park District. And we've had a couple of discussions, there's been meetings, offline meetings with the petitioners, a couple of town board members have participated in that, Melody and I have participated in a couple of them. I think the feeling of the groups that I have, you know, we've been involved with, talking with, is that it's not a bad idea to do this, but it has to be done properly. I know that there's some questions that the town board has for the petitioners, they would like to see a more concrete commitment to certain community benefits of this going forward. I know that from a zoning standpoint, and having been a zoning enforcement officer for occasion, I want to see the actual language for special use permits, which I think would be part of this process, very carefully written out and put together, which I think is necessary. Once again, we're discussing this committee that we've had with the town that's set up and that we've been using for a couple of years, which is actually working on zoning amendments, trying to fix, you know, problems we have zoning law, things like that. The town board may wish some other group to do this, but I think this is something that we need to do, we want to work with the petitioner as well as this, along with this as well. Under the zoning law, Article 12 for amendments, the town board is required to refer any zoning amendment proposal to the planning board for a 60-day review. This one, I believe, was referred to us on December 12th or something like that, and so our 60 days would run up and run out in, what, February 12th, something along those lines. Given the discussions that we've had, the town board wants a good deal more information, they want more of a commitment from the, from the petitioner for the public benefit, they want a better understanding of exactly what the zoning regulations would be that would be part of this. So I don't think we're necessarily tied to a 60-day, 60-day limit. I circulated to you a memo Jim gave us, I think at a meeting or two ago, on this particular issue, raising a number of other issues which just tend to raise. 9G was supposed to be a limited access road, the idea was it was a way to go through the village of Rhinebeck with commercial vehicles and things like that. But it's also turned into one of, you know, our more potentially desirable commercial areas, so we do have uses. The particular property in question here, where this would happen, basically has very good single entrances that could be used by different projects on that property. So that isn't necessarily a big problem for your curb cuts, but it is, you know, traffic, things like that, are other things that need to be considered, other than just transferring the use and what would happen. transferring the use and what would happen. I know there's a great interest of what will then happen to the three properties Ruby's currently uses for the Chrysler Jeep dealership at the 99G lot. There's a lot of interest in the community of trying to, you know, make that look more attractive. It is one of the major gateways into the town and into the village. So, I think tonight, I don't think we're in a position to say we approve this proposal or we oppose it. My only feeling is that I think what we'd like to tell the town board, what I would like to tell the town board, and this is all to all of us, that we don't think it's a bad idea, that in general it's a good idea, but it needs a great deal more work in terms of the details, what's going to be involved, what's going to happen. Before, we would be in a position to say, yes, we recommend you adopt what you've said or no, we do not believe it's appropriate. And I think the town board shares that opinion. I don't think they are all ready to move forward with this at this point in time, from what I've been told by the supervisor. So, that said enough, does anybody else want to say something?
A question about the, I mean, this is Ruby's talk about moving their service department up the road. Is that more or less correct?
Yes.
So, in terms of traffic on 9G, that won't significantly change because instead of going and turning in at the light there, they'll turn in, you know, a few tenths of a mile up the road.
It will also be the Subaru service.
Okay.
It'll be from the village as well.
So, that will actually lessen traffic in the village?
It could, yes.
And then it won't increase traffic, particularly from the existing Ruby's on the corner of 9 and 9G, but some additional traffic might go. But we're not talking about a major increase in traffic in this area.
Not necessarily. It's something that needs to be looked at.
We're talking about it being dispersed differently. We're talking about service relocating, both from the village and the corner.
Right.
And we're talking about sales remaining at the corner.
Okay.
So, you'd have different clients going directly to different locations based on their business needs.
And right now, it's just Ruby's that is planning on doing, using this area to that sort of thing?
Yes, and that's another thing, you know, that is broadly to consider. Do we want to have other, I mean, Ford dealership or perhaps a franchise that isn't in Rhinebeck? Do we want to have this particular ORP area opened up to any number of uses, you know, specific auto service uses? Do we want to see greater diversity, something like that? That's another thing we need to look at. There's just a bunch of things that really, it's just not ready to go. It's not a bad idea by any means. I think overall, if it's done right, I think it's a very good idea personally, but I think it needs a lot more work. And that's sort of the message I would think we want to send to the town board, that we don't oppose this, we think it could work well, but we need to see a good deal more. Right now, we don't have sufficient information to decide whether or not this should go ahead as it's been proposed.
And what's the nature of the information that you think the most egregious part that we lack?
I think part of it is when I was reading the one special use permit would be allowed, it's basically the special use permit that would currently have the service area of gas stations. And I think it should, my personal view is it should be separated out into service areas only, such as, well, such as what M&amp;M is at the southern part of the village of the town. You could then also have gas stations, which you'd have as a separate special use permit. And also car rentals should probably be a separate special use permit. There are many dealership also rent cars, and you can certainly apply for special use permits, but then there's enterprise and hoods and Aids and all those things. And I think that we should recognize the potential when we put a new use in somewhere, we should really look at all the potential entailment of that use and just, you know, not say no to it, but just make sure that we know what we're putting in there, what we're committing. And I don't think we're there yet, really, in that.
You might want to also explain the error. There's been a lot of discussion about community benefit.
Right. I was trying to say the other major thing that we're looking for, greater clarity on this community benefit, which has to be demonstrated as part of this, part of this application. And that means what is the benefit back to Rhinebeck? And in this case, because there's conversations going on between the town and village government, all of that needs greater clarification and more spelling out. But I think tonight, one of the reasons it's here, you know, the applicant is here with their representatives, and we're going to be asked to make a recommendation to the town board. And so, if there's anybody on the planning board tonight that isn't clear about the general direction that Ruby's wants to go, how they see it being shaped, tonight would be the night to ask those questions of them so that as we continue our discussion, you have all of the data in front of you that you would need to draw up a conclusion because we're talking about making a change in the community.
And do we have Ruby's?
Yeah, they're right there.
Have their overall plan and look there with that?
Well, they certainly can present the scope of it.
I think maybe that would be a nice idea.
I would recommend that, I would recommend that we have the applicant tell us what their story is because we're just throwing balls in the air, really not getting any real information. Let them give us the information, and we'll ask questions and we'll go from there.
I just pushed to step back for one second, and that is to understand, I think we're talking, what, about 80 acres here?
I'm not sure how big, well, I think they're from-
Or issue.
Yeah, why don't we have this on the panel circuit?
Actually, I have one basic question.
Well, we're talking about the ORP district. What does that stand for?
Office Research Park.
Okay. And it is one large parcel, is that right?
I think there are a couple of parcels in there, actually. Including one across another road with a-
Why don't we let the people think they're going to pitch you a vote in America?
Well, those are, that's a good question.
I'm trying to understand, for example, what this district is and whether it's many parcels, one large parcel?
That says there's three parcels. How many acres are involved total?
I think they're, explain it. There's actually two locations that are, we're having conversations about Stamp property and the four corners, although they would be separate applications for change going down.
And I think there are actually six properties on the ORP.
Oh, six, sorry. And then there's at least five.
But there, one did.
Let's, let's-
Please, go ahead. Uh, uh, uh. Sorry. My name is Scott Hutchins. I'm one of the general managers at Ruby's. Do you want to do this?
Yes.
Yes, please.
For safety purposes.
Okay. So, what we're looking to do in summary is to move our service centers out of the village of Rhinebeck for Subaru and off the corner, at the corner of Route 9 and 9G, and combine them into one single service center in the ORP property on currently what is owned by Stamp, right, Smith and Brothers. The, in doing so, we will then have just sales here in the village, and we'll have just sales on the corner. Ideally, if we had lots of money and could just wave a wand, we would be done at the corner, we'd have a single building instead of to, it would be about 60% of the existing square footage of that property would sit back further and we'd do some work on it. That is our ultimate goal, but it's down the road a little bit. By moving our service centers out of the village and out of Route 9, there's obvious benefit in regard to passenger vehicles. Those vehicles that come in for service, we're talking about over 100 vehicles coming and going in the village. We're talking about someplace in the vicinity of 75 on average, on an average day at the corner. The timeframe in which those vehicles come and go, they usually come in earlier, they're coming and going at the time of day in which there is typically commuter traffic. People on their way to work, stopping and dropping off a car on the way home from work. So, they add burden at that time of the day. On the other hand, our sales community, traffic usually starts later in the morning, between 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock in the morning, and often goes later at night, but comes at irregular times and is not part of that commuter timeframe. In addition, we would now have the ability to remove many of the vehicles that are on our service centers, whether it's producing our total passenger inventory for sale, our loaner vehicles in which we give to our service customers, taking 50% or more of our staff away with them, and reduces the number of cars that we have just from a parking, a staff parking. I think in the village, we're looking at over a 50% reduction in vehicles, and at the corner, we're looking at closer to 60% reduction in vehicles. In addition to that, the other burden beyond the passenger portion is all those elements that support the service business and our sales. So, every new car that we sell goes through our service facility first. So, before it's a car for sale, it's a car for service. Every one of those tractor-trailer trucks that come into the village, we shut down Route 9 to back those trucks up Chestnut Street, and we shut it down again for that truck to leave. Every time a truck comes in to deliver cars at Chrysler, they come up Way Road, and they interfere with the traffic on Way Road, and we shut Way Road down so we can back them into the annex to get the cars off, and we shut down Way Road again. There's a neighbor north of us, sorry, south of us on Way Road, which two years ago, when all of this came in and we were trying to do something with Chrysler, put up their hand and said, "Look, you got to do something about Way Road." This would eliminate those trucks and their entirety from the village and from Way Road. There would no longer be these vehicles coming in and out. We also have oil deliveries and pickups. They come in two to three times a week. We have garbage, large garbage trucks come in two to three times a week. We have deliveries coming in daily. We have vendors that come in and sell to us on a daily basis. There's a tremendous amount of traffic generated, and these are now larger trucks. They pose traffic issues, whether it's in the village or it's on the corner, pulling out. That's a very busy corner, and when the lights are green, that's a very fast corner. I've seen tractor-trailer trucks jump, not Route 9, because of the speed in which they go through. It is a difficult corner to get larger vehicles out. It's a difficult corner to get more and more traffic out. We have ways of mitigating that. When we're down to simply sales, the amount of traffic that's going to be coming and going is significantly reduced. So, when we talk about what are we trying to do, we're trying to lessen the, improve our ability to serve our customers substantially. We are landlocked here in the village, and we're landlocked on the corner. We, the amount of service opportunity that we have that we're losing is tremendous. We don't service half of the people we sell cars to in our local area speaking, and I'm not including those people that buy cars from us that live in New York City, on the other side of the river, and likewise. We would have the ability not only to provide better service, and we are in an area that is set back, we're off the road. That particular property, Office Research Park, if you agree, the zoning is designed for businesses, not unlike ours. There's bus garages that can be in there with special use permits, heavy equipment that can be in there, so our business is like and kind. We recognize that we're back off the road. We're not opposed to doing other measures from landscaping to enhance it. We're not opposed to taking the entrance and maybe taking some of that rock ledge out, making it easier to see, making it easier to come through. But all your trailer, tractor-trailer trucks and whatnot will now be turning in off Route 9G in a clear line of sight and with significant distance on all three angles, coming south on 9G, north on 9G, and the road into Stamp is about a quarter mile long too, so that they're staging there too. You don't have a situation where cars are backed up now so somebody can turn in because they're coming down. That would never be an issue there. So, we've looked at this, and we've looked throughout Rhinebeck, and the people on this board know we've been working on this project for almost three years. We feel this is the best solution that we can come up with in Rhinebeck, and we feel that the, what we're doing here in the village and what we'll be doing at the site in the corner will greatly enhance where we are today with them. In the village, we'll no longer be using Chestnut Street. The village can have it back in its entirety. All right.
Quick, quick questions. One, not that it's really any of our business.
Eric, we can't, we can't hear your question.
I'm sorry. Not that it's any of our business, but what's going to become of the service in the village? Is that going to go over to sales? Okay. And also, what sort of signage will be required to let people know that your service department is now going to be back in there?
I can't-
That would only be part of your application.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. So, but you will need some sort of signage.
I mean, yes, please. I mean, we do still need to let people know that we're there.
Sure.
I think to clarify things here, what we're basically, what's discussed now is just a use amendment to the zoning allowing the use, but it'd be under special use permit. So, things like signage, landscaping, all that other things, they'd have to come before the planning board to actually get approval to actually go ahead with, and site plan approval to actually go ahead and do the servicing on that site. This is just to put the use in there so that they can actually then legally apply for a special use permit and site plan to do this.
So, issues like access, like turning lane for tractor-trailers going in there, that all would be-
All would be part of the site plan application. And we have talked to them, and I know Jim raised the issue of speaking to, you know, DOT and others about, and these are all questions that have to do with the actual application that follow the change and the allowance of this use and that, so, which is what the town board is asking us to comment on.
Okay. Thank you.
What would your size of your building be? Roughly between 35,000 and 40,000 square feet, what we're estimating?
You are still discussing either the use of existing buildings or the creation of new buildings? That's still a work in progress.
Yes. That's a work in progress and dependent upon us having the ability to actually work with Stamp to make that decision.
Those are some of the questions you were asking earlier that were still out there. One of the was, they have two options here, that's to use the existing buildings or do they need additional space as well? So, they're still working through the details of that, as well as parking and all of the other-
Stamp is an ongoing business, but I think at this point in that business's career, they're not necessarily using all of their facility. And maybe we take theirs and build them a small building, and they continue their business in a more appropriate-sized building, while theirs are appropriate. I mean, those are all things that we discuss.
And how long do you think that decision process will take?
Well, I think once this, we're, that decision and discussion with them won't begin until this process is, we have the approval from a zoning standpoint where we can go with them and negotiate what we want.
All right.
Does anyone else have a question for Scott or Dan or Mark?
Did your question, did you answer?
Well, I guess I wanted to get an understanding of the entire ORP district. I would almost like to see, like, is there a site plan for the district? Can you see where Stamp now is? Can you see where the roads are in there or anything like that?
There's one here. I'll give you this.
I knew it, I knew it was absolutely. My name is Dan Schuster. I'm a consulting consultant to the Ruby's. Let me just answer that, that question. This is the LRP district, which is 180 acres in size. It's also by far the largest business industrial district in the town, and it has the ability to accommodate the kind of use that Scott was talking about with ample setbacks and opportunities to screen and to landscape, which makes it appropriate for the type of uses that are being discussed.
But I think one of the concerns is in how much of that we would want to see developed going forward. Because any, you don't want, I mean, there's the balance between protecting the gateway and green space and open space, traffic, all of it, but you're only talking, you're talking about taking over the entire property, correct?
Taking over about 120, what would be available in the Stamp property is 120 or 130 acres. How much of it would be used for what's being discussed as the service facility is considerably less than that obviously.
Right. And the question of subdivision down the line is also another topic of discussion.
Certainly.
Okay.
Are there going to be any activities going on in this new facility that are not presently going on in the other facilities?
No.
What was the map that you were holding up?
So, this was, this is, that's your call for RRP.
So, it's a total map, and it's showing everything, right?
So, this is the, this is the boundary. Look, there's four different lots that run up that, up into that boundary. There's two lots here that are owned by Heel, neither of which are developed. This is the lot that's owned by Smith and Brothers, and well, it's, they own these too, so they own obviously the lion's share.
And this is the existing building.
This is the existing building.
This is the existing building and this is simply a concept, a 40,000 square foot building with... It's purely a concept.
And so do you envision subdivision?
We don't envision, we're trying to envision this right now. It is really beyond our vision. Our focus, our main focus, our number one focus is we have to satisfy our current customer base, which we are not doing. I'm not a realtor, I don't particularly like the realty business, so I'm... Are we open to it? If somebody came, there was a business here that was desirable, sure. It's not in our immediate future.
So you wouldn't own the land that this facility is...
It would be our intention to. Under our current discussions with Smith and Brothers, we will coexist on this property one way or another.
Well, that ultimately would have to be spelled out.
Well, we either, we're gonna buy and they're gonna lease back from us. We lease it, provide a chunk of it, it'd be a subdivision. I mean, again, we can't really formalize anything because we can't operate with today's...
It's also hard to figure out how to go on this without knowing exactly what you're gonna do down the line.
It's kind of a catch-22. Obviously, I'm not gonna move myself buying this and then not be able to do it.
Great, would you see further development eventually with this very large...
Based upon the way the code's written and whatnot, the idea of this being developed is in the plan. We're not opposed to it, it is not our primary interest.
Is this primarily wooded level?
No, it's a combination of woodlands. There's some corn being grown here by a local farmer.
That's helpful, thank you. Maybe people down there would like to see it.
What other uses are allowed in that?
Mostly business, commercial.
There's lots of large equipment rental.
Obviously, yeah, light manufacturing, that's what's there, but...
There are machine shops, small equipment rental sales, bus garages.
Heavy equipment, office, research-type development for...
My recollection with the comprehensive plan was this was the area that was staked out to be as light industrial use and there was an expectation that there was more development that could take place within that particular area. It hasn't, it hasn't actually...
Yes.
Light industrial is the way I think we've always described it generically. We had some other folks look at it a couple of years ago and that was for computer parts, that type of manufacturing.
Michael, if this rezoning went forward, it would be just that district, correct?
Yes, yes.
At this time. Although what Michael and I have been sharing with the town board that there are a number of, there are a number of potential applicants that have been coming in over the last few years, also looking for different types of things along that corridor. And it's been our recommendation that at some point you might want to do a corridor study of, from the traffic line to the bridge approach road, so that we have a better understanding of everything that is going on there, the pressures that are on there, the needs and the possibilities and opportunities. The town board is considering looking at that.
And right now, we have RC5, I feel like this is the north of it. And then what's this? GW-N?
Oh, Gateway North.
Gateway North?
Yeah.
And Business.
Right, that's...
And Gateway North is...
I think Gateway North, that little tiny thing, right? That's the gas station. Oh.
No.
Is that residential?
Gateway North, like the other side of the road.
It's on the other side.
The gas station has its own little...
Gateway, that's Gateway North is that, the gas station site, just after the bridge approach.
It's a one-lot zoning district.
Yes.
For the gas station. This one... Oh, I'm sorry, it's for New Business Board is the gas station.
Now, is the town looking to us for advice on changing the whole district's name or to adding uses within that district?
Just adding a use to it.
How does this use differ from, I mean, in essence, how is it not, not in terms of... How is it all that different from what's been allowed here?
In many ways, there's similarities.
It seems to me they are, but I don't know.
It just hasn't, it isn't specifically called out.
Okay.
And so the fact that it's not called out means that it's not allowed use as it currently stands.
Okay, so only uses that are directly called out physically named or...
Are legal. Anything else is considered illegal, which is why they're here.
So we're just looking to name another business that's eligible for this?
That's their request.
Yeah, I think it would be smart on the town's portion if they look at other uses as well while they're going through this instead of piecemealing, because otherwise it's going to be known as spot zoning and that's not gonna work.
Well, that question has been raised and that was part of the reason Michael and I were suggesting a corridor study. But there's a problem in fairness to the folks that are here tonight. There's a time issue with them that they present to us. So a corridor study would certainly take longer to accomplish to get to the same end. And I don't think we're necessarily thinking we want to hold them up on the yes or no answer on this. But I would appreciate the support of the rest of the board in encouraging the town board to go along with a corridor study of that entire area so that we get some better understanding of what can be done.
As a second stage?
Yes.
Get through this?
Yes, yes.
We don't want to delay this because it has some significant implications if it isn't...
But it would be helpful to encourage the town board to look at a larger second-phase corridor study.
I made that recommendation in a letter that you all got a copy of. Talks about looking at access management along the entire corridor, just given, this is a trigger in a way, I guess. There's been discussion here for a while what's going on, that we should look at the corridor as a cohesive element up and down. So this would be part one, we'll look at that and how that would be, you know, this would be rezoned, but there is a larger consideration as well we have to consider as we're doing this and then as we move forward.
And how many vehicles are they going to expect to be entering this facility?
Well, right now, if you just take what's coming into Subaru, taking what's coming into Chrysler, we're talking about close to 200.
200 vehicles, yes.
But again, that's passenger vehicles. It's the other things, the trucks and stuff that really coming in here versus coming off that road, coming in here, the buildings that lessen the burden on the curbs.
Absolutely agree with that.
I would think that the people on Chestnut Street would be thrilled. Because at 7:30 in the morning when you go up Chestnut Street, it's going to be tired.
Well, you're late, why don't you show up a quarter or seven?
Well, I'm slow. I'm tired.
But you're tired.
And tired.
Tired and tired.
And from our perspective, try doing it today, now that it's snowed. Right, I mean, all of these things just make it harder and all of that will be better managed and planned for and we will step away from Chestnut Street and go get the whole road back.
And all those cars with the numbered tags in the windows will go away.
I would just reinforce because I know it would be important to us as well and will be very important to the town board that the whole package about the benefit to the town is put together and spelled out in as much detail as possible so that those questions are answered.
Elizabeth, at the last meeting, took the lead to say that she would provide that and sent us a note as soon as she gets back from vacation, she plans to do this.
She plans to provide you with what?
The specificity that we should enhance our...
So she's gonna be, she's suggesting she'll tell you what she wants in collaboration with the village mayor?
Just...
I'm just...
That's just an interpretation, a very short email.
Okay.
I don't have more than that. We, at that meeting, she said she would provide it with us. Dan followed up with her to say, who should, what should we? And she said, "I'm on my way out of town. When I get back, we will provide you with that information." So I don't want to put words in her mouth, I'm not suggesting I will be with the mayor, but she's led all the other conversations indicated she would be working with the mayor, so I would presume, yes.
Okay, you'll be looking at everything, including easements along the highway and stuff like that? I mean, that would be something I'd ask you to look at.
And I'm gonna then presume that that's gonna be in your recommendation of her, which she's gonna turn around and share to us, so...
I'm just sharing an opinion.
She's actually mentioned it to me that she would like to see, excuse me, she would like to see that.
That's the first we've heard.
Yeah, okay, well, yeah.
I'd like to focus on the response when we get that letter and not hit parts in between and whatnot.
I think what we can do tonight, I think, because I think I'm bringing consensus here, that we would support this use, this, we think it's a good idea. We understand the town board, we'll be talking with you to try and flesh it out on exactly what's going to go into this amendment. And I think we could endorse the idea and, you know, what you're really striving for, before we could give a specific yes or no to the specific language of the amendment, we need to hear back from the town board about exactly what it is they're actually going to be looking at. But I, you know, does that sound reasonable to all of you?
I don't know, I think we'd, for the short-term recommend that we approve the use of that property for this particular business and further down the road, something else could follow with it, like the study, the corridor study. Because there's a DOT problem at an intersection which is horrible. And I'm waiting for the gas tanker to roll over and he swings that corner someday and spew it all over Route 9 and 9G.
Well, the one problem I have with that, Woody, is that what's in the petition right now is to be basically, you know, approving, recommending the option, is a definition that includes gas station with service area and whatnot. And I don't think that's what we want to do. I think we need to basically ask the town board to basically separate out uses. So the gas station is a separate use from our service area.
So gas station use chart, gas station and service, gasoline station and service center are on one line? Yeah, we keep looking to take it and print on two lines.
That's what we did, what's proposed is...
Not what we propose, it's what I think Michael is suggesting our proposal should change to.
I don't follow that one.
Yeah, now Michael's...
I think Scott, Scott understands what I'm saying. Basically, and I don't think this will hold it up at all, Woody, because we've met again in a couple... I don't even know when you're meeting with Elizabeth, I don't know when she's gonna be back. But it's very likely that you would be able to have specific information later before our February 4th meeting, in which case we could then say, "Yes, this is good, go ahead and do it." I don't think that's...
I think, and I don't disagree and I have no concern, we do not want anything to do with gas station. So separating the two on the use chart so that there's now gasoline and there's unique sets of specific special needs and then our service station is unique set of...
That's what we propose, is to create a separate category or a motor service facility as a separate use.
It's not in the petition that I saw anyway, it says Scott's describing. I don't think this is a problem, I think it is...
I think we have the definition in there, but I don't think we were clear to say that, look, when we're done, instead of there being five things on the use chart, there's going to be six. These two will be...
If we're having this discussion, I guess we aren't clear.
But anyway, I think what I might define it for to do is say, "Yes, we think this is a good use for the property. We can move their service areas to this site. We just want to see the specific language." And also, I know you're gonna be discussing about some community benefits with the town board, which would be part of the amendment. We just want to see what's in this amendment. Right now, we don't know that. And I think that we want to see that and we hope by February 4th, we'll have that information, which may be putting too much pressure on the town board, but I know they meet on the 28th of this month. Maybe they'll be in a position to do that.
I think we've got a lot ready to be put on paper. I don't, you know, my point is that before I do it like this and have somebody say, "Why don't you do it like that?", I'll just wait.
The only other thing I would recommend is you be very careful in your verbiage when you talk about service center, because you are going to have to have some amount of fuel on-site for your new cars, for the service of other cars.
Not outside of what's, not outside of a vehicle gas station. We do not store gas, we don't have gas on our facilities today. We go to local gas stations.
Oh, we do, okay.
We do not have tanks in the ground.
I know, it's pulled out of here.
We have one oil tank which fires the, which we use for fuel for heat.
Yeah.
At Subaru, that's the only underground tank we have.
And that's recycled fuel design, recycled.
Which is inside the service area is recycled. This particular one has to be an old oiler that we have that heats the office area.
So we're talking about the zoning amendment. I think if we look at this, it'll clarify both for Ruby's and also for some other complications that I've found in the ordinance in terms of the definition of uses there. It kind of combines two uses into one in the use table. So I think it'll clarify things for everybody. If we, you know, there's a separate definition, but it refers back to other criteria in the document. We just want to clarify some of those, make sure that it's clear exactly what would happen with this use and then what happens with the existing use in the code so that we don't muddy the waters at all, you know, what exists and what's proposed. So it's clear when we go to the site plan.
We can, when you do a lot of this, that we don't have questions, you go to the zoning enforcement, they'll say, "What does this mean?" We'd like to know it upfront so it doesn't break things up.
We want to make sure when we do this that we can move forward, it doesn't create more problems down the road.
So I could hear a resolution that the planning board approves, you know, approves this concept. We believe that it would be a good thing for Ruby's to move their service areas into the ORP area. We would like to see, you know, the specific language of the amendment before we were to say, "Yes, you know, adopt this amendment." And we encourage the town board to act as quickly as possible on providing that language so as not to hold up this process.
I would be happier with a word like "endorse this", the concept, rather than "approve the concept", because I don't have anything to look at to approve. So I'm happy to say I endorse this idea and I want to see the town board move forward with more specific details.
Then you could then...
And then at the February whatever meeting, if you have more details, then we can actually take up a resolution.
And we're very specific.
And you have a specific resolution.
Should we also mention phase two?
Yes, I would also like to say that we would, I would like to say we would recommend that the town board reappoint the zoning subcommittee and, you know, empower Jim to proceed with the corridor study.
But then would not be, the approval of this use would not be contingent on this.
It's separate from this particular action to, about the zoning.
The use, the use of...
And that study may help define if there was a potential for a subdivision in the future, what type of subdivision.
Can we look at those things that we've looked at? Some of the entrances could be to the property, we'll look at the general overall use, which I think we're all interested in.
Managing traffic, so your customers and everyone else can still manage to get in and out in the future if we start seeing work involved.
I believe...
You're absolutely gonna have to knock that out here as of now.
So does everyone sort of understand what the resolution is?
Yes.
Could I hear a second?
Motion, seconds.
I'm in favor.
Well, you already want to go, I didn't have a motion.
And we'll work with Jim here to, the words, I know that Gretchen is taking obvious notes, so...
My whole board, Michael.
I'm sorry?
Whole board.
Whole board? Well, I don't think we need to. Just because I've been, I think it's a consensus of the law, in favor.
I have for a day.
What, what?
How about order any days and then...
Okay, the final topic for discussion tonight. And we obviously, it was an amendment to the zoning law for affordable housing. Edna and I have been reviewing and working on this. We sat in with the affordable housing committee for about a year or so. And with success. I guess you've read what I sent out. I honestly have very serious concerns with what they're proposing. They're basically trying to develop a different way of reviewing and judging projects just for affordable housing and will be more in this community. I believe it's a mistake, I mean, I think you've seen what I said. What I would like to see is basically a overlay district done for affordable housing areas where they feel they're an affordable housing district, affordable housing project could be situated. Just the way we have a, we have a overlay district for the mining, we have an overlay district for water resources. Basically, it doesn't change the underlying zoning of the property, of the land within a zoning district. You could have this in the RC5 district and all the zoning uses and everything would still be permitted there. It was just that if it's also a overlay, you would have the greater benefit of perhaps greater density, some other relaxed regulations to doing affordable housing project. And then the affordable housing project, just like the country... And then the affordable housing project, just like the country of one, country of two, hotel, motel, would then be subject to a special use permit being issued by the planning board. This is the path that I know I would like to see, that I know Edna would like to see. If you have read what the affordable housing committee has sent to the town board, they're basically talking about through a zoning amendment, both creating a floating district where a greater density would be permitted for a affordable housing project, at the same time as that local law is passed, part of the local law would be the approval basically of the affordable housing project, the concept plan, the details of it. The role of the planning board would then be to approve a site plan, which basically would just, I don't really see the value of that, everything is already really been approved. There's some discussion, well, the planning board could do a secret review for the town board, I don't believe that's possible legally, given the way they're trying to do this all as a legal, as a local law. Local laws, basically in my view, they establish the zoning law. If you're reviewing and approving projects, that's an administrative function that the planning board serves, not the town board. That's, that's just my feeling, I would like the town board to, if nothing else, to just sit back, take this, take this back for a little bit and actually start looking at what they're really doing there, to really consider this alternative that Edna and I have been working on, which I feel brings the whole affordable housing project, whole proposal under our existing review and approval procedures. The town board does not have to have four hours of training each year in site plan review, special permits and land use and zoning, we all do, we have experience, we know how to do it. I don't understand why they want to make a separate process for this, I think this is one of the things we demonstrated tonight with the Hudson Solar Sun Common project, we're extraordinarily careful, we're extraordinarily detail oriented, I believe we do this and then I understand we have some differences of opinion, but I think we would all agree that on that we have really done everything we possibly could to try and be as thorough. The same with Rockledge, we have looked at it and looked at it, the applicant, I think, has taken from us the idea, for example, the country in one is gone now, but that wasn't a good idea. I think eventually that can be a very good project, I think with the gardens with phase two and three, I think this board did a remarkably good job. I'm very proud of this planning board, I'm very proud of the work we do and I quite frankly don't mind telling you, I'm insulted that they think that the town board could do a better job of including a project like this, I don't think they could do it at all.
Thank you for the reason for changing the procedure.
Not really, because I don't think they understand our procedures. And I don't think it's, and I don't think it's that they don't care, because I think they do care, they have so many other things on their plate, so many other, I mean, can you imagine if they had to do the Sun Common Hudson Solar project to fit that onto their schedule with all the other responsibilities they have?
It'd be a good idea.
Thank you, Woody.
We have one, anyway.
I think that, I don't think it's that they don't respect the planning board, I think they just don't understand what goes into properly reviewing a project for approval or disapproval.
I think, Michael, just to add to that, I think that there's also, you know, that is, this is what you guys do, this is what your expertise is, I mean, the town board would be put in a position where they'd be having to fit this around, I mean, imagine one of these applications coming up during budget season and trying to conduct the review at the same time that the town board's trying to do its other business, in addition to the fact that this would be really a new process for them. So I think that's another reason why what you're proposing makes sense.
Michael, I'd like to comment, first of all, is a question to our councillor, are they doing this because it's a federal requirement or are they doing it because they think it's the right thing to do?
It's, you know, it's a plan to, to make some provision for affordable housing in Rhinebeck and so that's what's the, that's what the driving impetus is for this.
Let's go with affordable housing, if I read this proposal about the floating zone, I think they're setting up a ghetto because what they're doing is taking all the people with low incomes and premium in this plot, that's not the concept that this country wants to see, and I don't think anybody in Rhinebeck wants to see. And secondly, while we're at, I heard the word Rockledge, perhaps they should, with 36 units, have to have one or some multiple of one affordable units in that housing project. So I am scared to death that we're going to make a public housing concept with the way it's going right now, and if you want to see a nice public housing, it's common, just go down to Smith Street Housing in Poughkeepsie.
Part of what I think in the plan, I think was being hoped for is that any affordable housing would be inclusionary, it would be basically melded in with other housing, with other projects, it would not necessarily stand on. When the gardens offered, and I want to, I think it's important to emphasize, the gardens offered to do affordable housing in phase two, it was there, it initiated for them, they came to me and said, we would like to do this if we could, some of these units, we believe we can make them affordable through, you know, less brand interiors, you know, things like that, a number of things like that, and it was set up to do that and for some reason, they have new things available, they made them available, somehow the management sales of it, which was not their responsibility, it was someone else's, simply didn't get the word out, didn't, you know, so it didn't work, I think only two of the units actually were sold as affordable units. But I think that's part of what we look at, what Edna and I have been trying to put together is basically by using something such as a overlay district, it would allow greater density, we would like to see in affordable housing, mixed use, mixed market and affordable so that it's basically, it is an inclusionary, it is not a gift, it is not just an affordable, you know, housing. By affordable housing, we're not talking about subsidized housing, we're talking about housing that hopefully can be built at a lower cost, but that the people who rent it, you know, they're renting or they're purchasing, whatever it is, but it's at a level where, you know, your moderate income people would be able to afford to live in the town of Rhinebeck better than, you know, which is very difficult now, there's really nothing being built, when you look at Rockledge, things like that, I mean, what's affordable anymore that's being built in the town of Rhinebeck?
They make the land affordable.
That's the other thing, the only way this would probably work is working with something through grants from some organization, it's, it's difficult, it's always going to be difficult because the cost of land, the cost of infrastructure, things like that, materials and all, you know, they basically, they're, they're set, they're, and so.
One of the arguments in favor of integrating affordable housing units into more conventional development is to try to address that very issue so that there is, the margins on a portion of the project are going to be higher and hopefully they're able to compensate and to help make available affordable units.
And that's what they were trying to do with phase two of the gardens.
It should be as visible to the other people that are living there, the 90% of people.
Yeah, so the two units of the gardens are basically undiscernible from.
From the outside, yes.
And, and all they're doing is cutting back on things like moldings and that sort of thing.
No, actually, they're approved, if my recollection serves me, the units that were being offered under the affordable housing provisions in that approval were going to be identical to the units that were being.
So what made them affordable, just the designation and that's.
There was a, a price to be controlled.
Okay.
It was, it was a community benefit they were doing for Rhinebeck. Very often with affordable, that would be from the outside, you couldn't tell the difference with people perhaps.
From the inside, you can't tell the difference either.
Well, it was going to be, the units had to have the same, you know, there were different strata of units, but the basic amenities that were going to be offered across the board were also going to be part of those units.
And the, the upgrade would be missing.
Right.
Right.
So, building codes remain, all that, you know, all those requirements are all there, so.
Absolutely, it's just rather than granite countertops, it might be, you know, for microns, something like that, you know, just cost.
So would you, what kind, are you looking for a motion of support for your counter proposal?
Well, ideally, we would like that, but at the same time, we want the planning board to feel comfortable, and we'd like basically to tell the town board that we're very uncomfortable with the proposal, we don't believe that creating a whole new process to review and potentially approve a project such as affordable housing is in the town's best interest, we don't understand the rationale for it, the law itself, if you.
But here's a rationale for it.
Well, I'm not sure what it is.
Well, what, what, we can take, develop a motion tonight, 10 pages.
No, we don't, no, we don't.
What exactly are you asking, I think we're all agreeing with you that the proposal that the town currently has is not in the best interests of the community and that we would recommend that they go back to.
I have this suggestion, if I may, it's, I mean, one, one way to communicate about, if you want to consider doing this, if you want to send the alternative that's been developed back with your recommendation with support for that, that's a way to communicate this concept of what, or things that it's looking for.
Have they seen it yet?
I, I shared the comment letter and Edna's outline with Chauncey and Warren and Jim.
Can we recommend that the entire package be forwarded to the town board with the recommendation that this is a preferred approach?
I think we can do that. I think we can do that, yes.
Sounds like a good idea.
Would that be all right?
I just want to know, as the planner, I, I generally agree with what Michael and Edna proposed, I think going back to using the traditional planning board methodology for, for doing something like this is, is the right route, there are other issues as well, but I just wanted to let you know that I do support, you know, what's been proposed on the set, I think utilizing the planning board the way it's supposed to be done.
I'm moving there, we do that.
You can second.
Okay.
Second.
Shall I poll the board for this one?
Sure.
Edna?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Oh, Catherine?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, Woody?
Yeah.
Yes, very good. We'll put this together, get this to the town board, I, and I'm hoping, when we spoke with them, Edna and I spoke with Chauncey and Warren was there and Jonathan Munch was there, and Warren said, well, why don't you see if you can come up with a specific special use permit and overlay? But I think what I'd like to do is send the packet we have here to them and basically encourage them to put together our zoning group again of people who basically have experience in zoning and land use and things of that sort, which we had before, to actually pull something together which we feel would be more appropriate. And that's, that's, I think, the direction we could try to go in. I don't think that this went back to the affordable housing committee, the only person there who has experience with zoning and land use is Sally, and she's been very busy with other things, so it's very difficult to have no background in this to try and pull this together, but I thank you for your support, Edna and I both, you know, I've spent a tremendous amount of time into this, and we know affordable housing is very important, but we know we need to do it right. I think we saw that for the solar law, I think there's some things that if we were up to us, we would have changed, we would have made some alterations and we don't have the legal right to do that. So we want to make sure we get this right first time so that we don't then say, well, you know, I really wish we, you know, and I think this is an opportunity for us to do that. So I want to thank you all, I think tonight's business is concluded, someone said they wanted to be out by 6:30, so if we want to sit here for five more minutes, we can, or we can adjourn.
I got two Friday cats, I got them all. Do your job, Woody.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Very good.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much, this is, this is tremendous discussion.
Have a lot of grand tonight.
Thank you, Joe.
This is a good one, thank you both, and Jim, this has been great.